Thank you. Members, our first item on the agenda tonight is apologies. I've received an apology from councillor O'Hanlon. Will be any other apologies from the floor? From Alderman Spears?
An apology from councillor Tilly McCollay and Gordon Candy. As I understand it, both are heading to Greenmire with one of their children for a seven o'clock introduction to education at Greenmire College, so I apologise.
Thank you, Alderman Spears, and we wish their kids all the best in that new venture. Councillor Mackel?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Apologies from councillor Keith Hawke and councillor Fergal Downley, councillor Jackie Downley and councillor Paul Duffy.
Thank you, councillor Mackel and councillor Tomlin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just note the apologies for councillor Larkham and councillor O'Neil?
Thank you, they have been noted. There's no other hands here like this, so we'll move on. The degrees of interest, I'm sure we don't have any exceptions, we'll move on to our agenda item three, and this for the occasion marking of the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth III. Members, I would just like to speak and then we'll be opening the floor. We'll ask our party group leaders to speak first and then we'll open the floor for anyone who wants to speak and you're all free to say something tonight, as I'm sure many will want to do. Alderman councillors, chief executive and all their staff, it is with tremendous burden of grief that I speak before you as we commence our special council meeting tonight. As across our nation, an outpouring of grief and mourning following the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, we stand united in her sense of loss and send her heartfelt and sincere sympathies to the royal family at this truly most difficult of times. As Lord Mayor of Armagh City, Bangor and Gravenborough Council, it is a privilege to represent the borough in a series of engagements and I know I will have your support and that support is highly valued. Her Majesty the Queen meant so much to so many and it really is only the beginning to register in our hearts and minds what an impact this devoted, selfless, loving lady has had on our nation and indeed the wider world. To consider her unprecedented reign spanning 70 years and for this to accumulate specifically and not unforgetably in her Platinum Jubilee celebrations only a short time ago seems in retrospect the most fitting of memorials to her character and the love she embodied and projected throughout her service. I am proud that this council played its part in that memorial period of celebration and those events enabled so many people to soak up the atmosphere and joy and enjoy these celebrations. I'm sure that will all live long in our thoughts. Her Majesty was a lady of faith and indeed on many occasions she referred to her faith, our Lord Jesus, and this foundation of her reign. The solid faith sustained her through many difficult times, most notably and recently in the death of her devoted husband, the Duke of Edinburgh. As we have been reminded over the last few days, the prayer Her Majesty requested of the nation in 1952, on that first Christmas broadcast when Queen Elizabeth II asked that God may give her wisdom and strength to carry out the solemn promises that she would be making and that I would faithfully serve them and that I would serve you all the days of my life. And I'm sure you will agree that this prayer was answered. We do thank her Lord and Savior for answering this prayer. As we consider the true scale of her late Queen's service, maybe over the next few weeks, days seek to emulate her brightest qualities and devoted service of respect, love and faith. This is a significant moment in history and is a humble experience to speak as a first citizen of this borough. We remember with a great sense of gratitude Her Majesty's life and service. I know many of you will want to pay tribute to Her Majesty and also share a moment or memory that's special to you as we think of Queen Elizabeth's 70 years of reigning of faithful service. I was chatting to a lady today at our service of proclamation and it was just great to hear her standing in the middle of our service today, who had been there 70 years ago. She was telling me all about being at school and hearing the news and there's not many of us, I'm sure, will remember that back and we're just glad that we have this this afternoon. Our Queen was someone who loved her Lord, who loved her family and she loved her country. Before I open the floor for other speakers, I would like to send my best wishes and the wishes on behalf of all the citizens of Armagh City, Bangor and Gravenborough Council to King Charles III. We pray that he will be blessed with health and strength to faithfully serve as his mother did before him. Now, I would just like everyone to stand please for a moment's silence. Thank you, members. Members, I'm sure many will want to give their thoughts and condolences and share some memories of Her Majesty. I personally can remember the first time that my recollection of anything about Her Majesty the Queen when my dead grandfather was young and every July he would be polishing his medals, he was very proud of his British Empire Medal and he was talking all about it. And he also was one of the first men in the end to have his name on the TA shielded, which he was very proud of and he went over to London to get this presented to him. And I asked them all about the ceremony in the pump and the one thing that he spoke about the most was as he sat there that afternoon, there was a wobbly tile in the floor and he was just panicking the whole time, he didn't know as much else going on, but he was panicking that Her Majesty would trip and fall and he was ready to catch her. So I know as we speak to many different people, they have all their own first recollections and I would just like now to open the floor and we'll call upon Alderman Mark Baxter, group leader for the Democratic Unionist Party, to speak please, thank you. And I would just like now to open the floor and we'll call upon Alderman Mark Baxter, group leader for the Democratic Unionist Party, to speak please. Thank you.
It's with great sadness that as group leader here this evening, I have to say a few words about the passing of our monarch, Her Majesty the Queen. It was only a short time ago that I paid tribute to her late husband, the Prince Philip, in this very place. Even with such advanced years, I didn't think this day would have come so soon. Elizabeth II has been steadfast head of state for the United Kingdom and the Commonwealth for as long as most of us have been alive, a constant throughout our lives. From the young age of twenty-five, she became the sovereign after her father's death. Since then, she has served the people here with great decorum and great dignity. A lifetime of service and dedication, right up until she invited Liz Truss to form her government on Tuesday past. Little did we all know that within a short time, it would be a new sovereign that would be inviting the new prime minister to form his government. Just a few short months ago, as a council, we celebrated, quite rightly, Her Majesty's Platinum Jubilee. Seventy years of service, some say a life of privilege, but to give seven decades to us, her subjects. Every move documented, every detail of your personal life led out in the press, constantly under the gaze of the world's media. But our Queen took up the mantle as a young lady, not long after she had served her country throughout World War Two. With a sense of duty carried out the demanding role with a regal grace and conscientious determination. Her Majesty led by example, and abiding memory of that being when she sat in the abbey at her husband's funeral, alone due to the restrictions imposed because of the pandemic. Here she reached out the hand of friendship and reconciliation when we all know how personally, how hard that would have been as she herself lost a family member at the hands of terrorists. In her annual Christmas address in twenty eleven, she referred to her Christian conviction and reminded us that forgiveness lies at the heart of her faith and indeed it can reconcile divided communities. She professed her faith on many occasions during those speeches. And in her speech in two thousand said, for me, the teachings of Christ and my own personal accountability before God provide a framework in which I try to lead my life. She was a true defender of the faith. Much has been said about Queen Elizabeth and much more will be said about her in the coming days. But from a personal perspective, I remember with great, great fondness the garden party in twenty fourteen to which I was present. As the Queen made her way back into Hillsborough Castle, the procession stopped to play the national anthem as is custom and practice. As fortune would have it, I was within six feet facing her as we began to sing those well-known words, God save the Queen. A very surreal moment indeed and as an unashamed royalist, one that I will cherish forever. So on behalf of the DUP, I would want to pass on our deepest sympathies for the royal family at this sad time. It's a huge moment in history for us all, but the burden of loss will be great on the family. And they can be assured of our prayers as they mourn the passing of their mother, grandmother and great-grandmother. To King Charles III, as he has now the Herculean task of leading the UK and the Commonwealth while dealing with such grief. We wish you every blessing and support and trust you can carry on your mother's work in these times of global uncertainty. God save the King.
Thank you, Alderman Baxter. Just want to check this, our camera, we're back working again here. We're just going to pause for a moment if some technical issues here. We're having some technical issues in the chamber. Thank you, Alderman Baxter. We're now going to ask councillor Mackel.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And Georgia, on behalf of the Sinn Féin group, I would like to express our deep regret at the passing of Queen Elizabeth II. She has led the British people as head of state for a remarkable seventy years. They will miss her terribly. I wish to acknowledge the profound sorrow of our neighbours from within the unionist community right across the borough who will feel her loss terribly. Queen Elizabeth made a significant contribution to advancing peace and reconciliation between our two islands and our people. She led by example, building relationships with those of us who are Irish and who have a different political allegiance and from herself and her government. I would like to offer my sincere sympathies and condolences to her children and her extended family circle as they come to terms with their grief. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Mackel. Now I'm going to ask Alderman Spears.
Lord Mayor, deputy council colleagues, as I speak on this very sad occasion, I do so with a heavy heart and a great sense of sorrow. I know that I not only speak for my colleagues here today, but also for the wider community across this borough. As a group leader of the Ulster Unionist grouping on Armagh City, Banbridge and Creaghavan Borough Council, we extend our deepest heartfelt sympathy to His Majesty the King and to all the members of the royal family on the passing of our dear sovereign Queen Elizabeth II. Her Majesty the Queen was the country's head of state for seven decades. But she will be no doubt fondly remembered by her family as a mother, grandmother and great-grandmother. Lord Mayor, we have lost not just the monarch, but the matriarch of our nation. The future, the figure who more than any other brought our country together and personified everything that makes us proud to be British. The whole nation will be united in mourning for our beloved Queen in the coming days. We will need time to grieve and to share our grief with others. Her Majesty's strong Christian faith had been evident in the way in which she conducted herself in thousands and thousands of public engagement and also in her remarkable Christmas broadcasts that have brought encouragement and hope to so many people over the years. She was not only respected, but respected and loved because of the qualities of duty, decency, integrity, fidelity that she embodied. In nineteen fifty-two, during her first Christmas broadcast, Her Majesty the Queen asked the nation to pray for her, and I quote, that God may give me wisdom and strength to carry out the solemn promises that I shall be making and that I may faithfully serve Him and you all the days of my life. I know we can all agree that she fulfilled her promises. We will mourn, we will miss her, but our overwhelming sentiment will be of gratitude, profound heartfelt and sincere thanks for what she did and what she stood for, for the life she lived and for what she gave us. Her reign was indeed glorious and it was our great good fortune to have her to reign over us. I recall with great fondness as an elected councillor on Armagh City and district council when our visit on the ninth of March nineteen ninety-five, Her Majesty the Queen accompanied by the Duke of Edinburgh conferred city status and presenting the royal charter to Armagh, regaining its ancient civic status. That was a momentous occasion and a historic occasion that I cherish to this day. A day in which my party colleague became the Lord Mayor, councillor Jim Nicholson, MEP. May I conclude my remarks on Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. I want to quote some famous words from the good book, the Bible, on her life of service to her nation. I have fought a good fight. I have finished my course. I have kept the faith. The United Kingdom has been truly blessed to have had Her Majesty as head of state, as sovereign, whose dignity and faithful service has inspired the entire nation and Commonwealth. I trust that God will grant King Charles III the same wisdom, good health in his reign over us and that he too will keep the faith as his beloved mother did. God save the King. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Spears. And councillor Toman is going to speak now. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, on behalf of the SDLP group on council, can I extend our sympathies to the royal family on the death of Queen Elizabeth? Queen Elizabeth served her people and her country for over seventy years. She has seen many prime ministers, presidents and intei pokes. And whilst she was a lady of duty to our country, we remember she was a wife, a mother, a grandmother and indeed a great-grandmother. The blessing of a long life does not make the burden of saying goodbye any later. And our thoughts and prayers are with them at what must be a difficult time. This island has been marked by conflict and division and the Queen and her family did not escape the heartache and pain with the loss of her uncle. But in common with the people of Ireland, she played her part in building peace on this island and reached out to all sections of our community. The Queen's historic visit to the Republic of Ireland in twenty eleven was a real watershed event for our two islands and of course her visit to the Gardens of Remembrance in Dublin. And her use of Irish at the State banquet in Dublin Castle, hosted by President McAleese, demonstrated her understanding that what might have been a simple gesture also helped turn the tide of history. Lord Mayor, a hereditary monarchy is not something that sits with our political beliefs in the SDLP. However, we do recognise that there are many people in our community and in this chamber who held the late Queen Elizabeth, her family and the institutions they represent very dear. We know the unionist community in Northern Ireland are mourning the loss of the Queen and to them we extend our heartfelt condolences. May she rest in peace.
Thank you councillor Toman. And we're now going to ask councillor Labrie. Thank you.
Good morning, good Lord Mayor, thank you. On behalf of the Alliance Party representatives on council, I would like to express our profound condolences to the royal family on the loss of the Queen, her much-loved mother, grandmother and great-grandmother. But while they have lost the matriarch, their entire country has lost someone who provided seventy years of constant and dedicated leadership. Her loss will be keenly felt by many, not just across the country, but across the globe. Queen Elizabeth was one of the defining figures of the twentieth century, as well as a large part of the twenty-first, due not only to her longevity, but also to her commitment and devotion to the nation. The majority of us in the borough have only ever known her in the role of sovereign. And it will be incredibly strange not to see her there carrying out her duties with grace and dignity as she unwaveringly did over the past seven decades. Throughout her role of head of state, the Queen worked tirelessly in service to the public, receiving praise from all quarters for her selfless dedication to the role. Many of us will have our own memories of the Queen. For me, I remember her visit to Ireland in twenty eleven. The first visit by reigning British monarch since the formation of the Republic of Ireland. During the state dinner, she spoke of the shared ties of family and friendships that exist between these islands and how they were the golden thread that runs through all our joint successes so far and all we will go on to achieve together. She concluded her remarks by speaking of the widespread spirit of goodwill and deep mutual understanding that has served to make the relationship between our two nations more harmonious and close as good neighbours should always be. Her strong support for reconciliation is one of the many aspects of her life which will remain as her lasting legacy. And I hope it brings her family and indeed all those grieving some comfort at this sad time. To finish my remarks, Lord Mayor, on behalf of the Alliance Party grouping, I'd like to wish King Charles well as he takes on the role of head of state within our constitutional monarchy. He can draw strength from the light of his mother's example, as well as the outpouring of support from people of all backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Labrie. And now we're going to have councillor Paul Barry. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, like thousands, if not millions, of people across the world this number of days, I like them have been immensely saddened by the passing of Her Majesty. this number of days, I like them have been immensely saddened by the passing of Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth. As a community, we mourn deeply her loss as if she was one of her own. And even at the proclamation today in Armagh City, so many people that we were talking to had said the exact same. She was like a grandmother to so many of us in the nation. Seventy years of service to the nation, the Commonwealth and indeed the world. An unblemished service. She reigned with integrity, compassion and grace. And as a community and the those that I represent, we have been honoured to have Her Majesty at its helm for seventy years. As we look back, we will cherish her memory and remember her legacy of service, commitment, duty, a very strong worth ethic, selflessness and sacrifice to this great nation for so many years. In this council area, she was our friend. And we were all delighted when she bestowed upon Armagh the city status and then later the Lord Morality status in Armagh City. We cherish those times when she visited the area down through the many years of service and commitment. I, like many in this chamber, have had the pleasure of meeting Her Majesty the Queen down through the years. And I will always cherish those times with pride, especially now. Our prayers are with the entire royal family as they mourn the loss of a mother, a mother-in-law, grandmother and great-grandmother. And such was the profound loss of an amazing lady for them. And in closing, as I reflected on her life, the verse in Matthew chapter twenty-one, twenty-five, verse twenty-one came immediately to mind. "Well done, thy good and faithful servant, enter thou into the joy of thy Lord." To King Charles the Third, we wish him God's richest blessings in the days, weeks, months and years that lie ahead. He has a massive task to follow, Lord's shoes to fill, but with God's help, God's ability, he will fit to see it through. God save the king.
Thank you, Councillor Labrie. Members, we have some more lights on. First, we're going to have our Deputy Lord Mayor, and when he's speaking, next will be Alderman Mitre, if you want to come up with the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I members add my words of condolence to our royal family on the passing of our dear Queen Elizabeth the Second? Members, truly, these are sad, sad days for our United Kingdom. Our thoughts are with the whole family as they must mourn a great loss, yet at the same time continue carrying out their civic and constitutional duties. We especially remember our King, King Charles the Third, given that the mantle as head of state is now on his shoulders. Her Majesty the Queen had many patronages across many different areas of life. One such was patron of the farmers' club in Whitehall Court, London. At the entrance hall of the club is a beautiful picture of our Queen and the Prince Philip. Each and every time I stay in the club, this portrait is lovingly admired by myself and I know other members. To conclude, members, by wishing our new King, Charles the Third, God's richest blessing as he leads our nation forward. God save the king.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, and Alderman Mitre.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And at the outset, can I thank yourself and the Chief Executive for facilitating tonight's meeting at very short notice? This evening, we gather to pay tribute and acknowledge the service and sacrifice of our late sovereign Queen, Queen Elizabeth the Second. How blessed we have been to have lived in the second Elizabethan era. An era in which, because of modern technology, we were able like none before to have access to our Queen. I have been fortunate enough to have had the privilege of seeing Her Majesty on three separate occasions. At garden parties at Hillsborough and then at Buckingham Palace, and at that momentous occasion in Parliament Building Stormont in June two thousand and twelve, when she celebrated her Diamond Jubilee. Over this past reign, she has visited Ulster on twenty-five occasions. But the stormant event shone out for me because as many as twenty thousand citizens lined the grounds and the Queen and the Duke of Edinburgh were driven very slowly through the grounds in an open top jeep, affording everyone a great view. Then we reflect on our Platinum Jubilee only a few short months ago. There was such joy that though failing in health, Her Majesty was able to take part. We think of her service over seventy years, right up until ours before her passing. We think of her work of reconciliation between ourselves and the Irish Republic. She was indeed a soothing balm between two quarrelsome neighbours, as has been said this weekend. We think of her many roles, wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother. She had, like every other family, joys, sorrows and trials to deal with. I feel it gave her an empathy with the common people. Her strong Christian faith sustained both her and us at times of difficulty. Her words during the recent pandemic were such comfort to so many in a dark time in our nation and across the world. We also think of her humour and sense of mischief. The James Bond sketch at the London Olympics, and only a few months ago, the Paddington Bear show sketch recently, showing a cross-generational sense of fun. We have indeed been blessed of God to have had her. We shall never see her like again, our precious sovereign lady. May God bless the royal family and us all as a nation at this time. God save the king.
Thank you, Alderman Mitre, and next Alderman Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we meet here this evening on what is a very sad and sorrowful occasion, following the passing of our monarch, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. As the nation's longest-serving monarch, whose reign spanned seventy years, she was our beloved Queen. Sadly lost at Thursday evening, we received the news that our most gracious Queen had passed away. And this evening, we come to gather to mourn her passing. The long reign of Queen Elizabeth the Second was marked by her strong sense of duty and her determination to dedicate her life to her throne and to her people. She was steadfast and totally committed to serving the people of the nation and of the Commonwealth. The Queen's commitment to duty and service was very evident when as Princess Elizabeth on her twenty-first birthday, and knowing that one day she would succeed, her father, King George VI, she spoke these words. "We must give nothing less than the whole of ourselves. This is a motto which has been borne by many of my ancestors, a noble motto, I serve." Those words were inspiration to many bygone heirs to the throne when they made their nightly dedication. We can truly say that our late monarch carried out her duties of service from that young age until her passing last Thursday evening faithfully and expertly. Each Christmas, we all look forward to the Queen's message. Last year, we listened to these words. "Jesus, whose teachings have been handed down from generation to generation and have been the bedrock of my faith, His birth marked a new beginning. As the carl says, the hopes and fears of all the years are met in me tonight." This evening, as we mourn the passing of Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth the Second, we give thanks to God for her life, service and Christian witness to our nation and to our Commonwealth. I send my deepest sympathy and condolences to our new monarch, His Majesty, King Charles the Third, and all the royal family. May they all know the presence and comfort of God at this very sad time and in the times ahead. God save the king.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson and Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for affording me the opportunity and it's simply only to put on record the sympathies, thoughts and prayers extended by those in the Cuscher DEA. If those could be conveyed and I wanted them put in the public record that the electorate of Cuscher stands with the royal family at this time. There has been, as has been said, an outpouring of grief. And it's hit everyone. It hit me at the time too. You don't think it will. You think, you know, you know, you have the utmost respect, but because someone's, you know, removed from you, it mightn't, you feel it mightn't impact you, but when it comes, it comes in like a wave and it does impact you. And all that she has meant to many communities right across the United Kingdom and right across the world. There's certainly a deep sense of grief. And I simply wanted to put on record the thoughts and prayers of the people of Cuscher and the extension of those to the royal family. It is surreal as well as we stand in Armagh today in the midst of the mourning. And we have this period of change in the proclamation of a new king. And it does, it sort of encapsulates life, you know, it's always changing. There's always change. No matter how things may seem to remain the same, change is only what, and I blink away. And that's the case in this circumstance. We have a new king and God save King Charles the Third. And I wish him all the very, very best as he commences this amazing journey that lies before him without his mother, of course. That's going to be a challenge. And we think of him at this time as well. We think of the family and all the pressure that will, you know, undoubtedly come upon them. And, you know, over the next few months, there'll be comparisons made and, you know, the media will be extra interested in how this will all play out. And we just think and pray for them all at this time. And it's, it's just, it's a real situation, but it's one where we take comfort from our late Queen's faith in the Lord. And I think that's what has kept her so grounded. I firmly believe that, that she grounded herself in the scriptures. And for seventy years, I can't imagine any other roadmap that would have allowed her to make the progress she made. And for, you know, thinking in the political realm, mistakes are made daily and they're quite costly in many circumstances. And we imagine that Her Majesty navigated such unimaginable grief at times and also times of elation. She always had the right words to say and they sustained people. And that's shown by the millions of people that have expressed their sympathies and came out onto the streets to express their sympathy. So, thank you, Lord Mayor, for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, and Councillor Cosby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I wish to thank you and the Chief Executive for putting the plans in place for this evening and indeed for the proclamation this afternoon and for making that happen so smoothly. It is a time of great sorrow for indeed the royal family and now His Majesty, King Charles the Third. But it's also a great time of sorrow indeed for our country. And we have seen the outpouring of grief on our screens in which highlights the words that Her Majesty once said herself is that grief is the price we pay for love. And the grief that is being outpoured shows clearly to us as a nation that Her Majesty, the Queen, was indeed loved. Loved by the peoples of this realm and her other realms and the Commonwealth broadly. Her loss will be felt keenly by indeed her family and her closest confidence. And to them, I am reminded of one of the Beatitudes is that blessed are they that mourn, for they shall be comforted. And indeed, I pray that God will bring all comfort to them. In her life, Her Majesty emblazoned a trail, so to speak, as she, as a twenty-five-year-old in nineteen fifty-two, assumed the throne. And indeed, as she led our country and our nation through the rebuilding after war, through uniting our nation at times of grief and tragedy, the disasters at Aberfan, indeed Dunblane, through the Falklands War, the worker's strikes through the eighties, through crisis, through financial crisis, through the loss even of Princess Diana. And indeed, Her Majesty led our nation with great dignity and with great sense of duty and service. And to that, I am ever thankful. And I hope as a nation of people that we can look to her as an example of service and that we may serve in some small way with the same sense of duty indeed that she did. In her twenty nineteen Christmas speech, Her Majesty spoke about how Jesus showed the world that small steps that were taken in faith and in hope can overcome long-held differences. And she added that many of us already try to follow his footsteps. The path, of course, she said, was not always smooth and it may be at times this year have felt quite bumpy. But small steps can make a world of difference. And indeed, she was right. She was right about many things in those Christmas speeches. And indeed, we think of other references that she spoke about the Good Samaritan on numerous occasions and how we should learn to love and to serve others well. Indeed, I seen the words of a song just today. The song is called Our Elizabeth. If heavy. Our Elizabeth forever. Elizabeth, to His Majesty, the King, who indeed is no stranger to our borough, having visited numerous times. I had the privilege and honour of my life of hosting him in twenty sixteen during my time in office as Lord Mayor. And indeed, he took great interest, as he does every time he comes to what's happening within our borough. And I say to him that as a representative of the Portidown DEA, that we were proud to host you on that day and you brought a great spirit of joy across our town. And we thank you for that. And in these days, we mourn with you, we grieve with you and we pray for you and that God would give you the strength to lead our nation through your reign. So we give thanks to God for all that Her Majesty has done for us and we look forward again to what His Majesty, the King Charles the Third, will carry on on her behalf. God save the king.
Thank you, Councillor Cosby and Councillor Tinsley, if you want to move over to this mic over here. After that, if anyone else, anyone else has signaled, signaled they want to speak, so if anyone does, if they want to raise their hand or let it right, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I wasn't actually for speaking tonight, but while others were giving their recollections, the verse from Ecclesiastes chapter seven. while others were giving their recollections, the verse from Ecclesiastes chapter seven, verse one, came to my mind. And basically, that little verse of scripture speaks about a person's reputation and their good name. And how important it is at a time of your death, how more important it is to have a good reputation and a good name than all the loving care that you can ever be given at your time of birth. And I think everyone speaking here tonight can bear testament to these words about our gracious Majesty the Queen, about her great name and her good reputation. And I just, since I was a child, I followed our royal family. I was just the most avid family, the avid follower that anyone can ever imagine. In those days, you bought the papers, you took the paper cuttings out and you put them into a scrapbook. And I had numerous scrapbooks everywhere, all about Her Majesty the Queen, her beauty, her fashion sense, everything, just her whole, her whole demeanour, everything. And for my was no wage, and I'm now fifty-three years of age, I just followed her all over those years. And I was very, very blessed back in May two thousand, well, many times. I was with councillor, our Alderman Muddry, when he mentioned about the cavalcade through Stormont. I had the honour of going with Jim to Buckingham Palace. And the Jubilee celebrations, Jim and I also had the privilege of going to London and seeing Her Majesty.
Sorry, councillor Tinsley, I think I just paused you for a moment. We seem to have lost sound here at the moment. I think just pause the meeting again, all of these members. Okay, members of the Labour Party are back live. Sorry, councillor Tinsley, we're going to bring you back in. Thank you.
You're okay. All right. But the most memorable memory I have of the Queen was back in May two thousand and two. Jim and I weren't long married, and he wasn't long a councillor. And he had got this special invitation through that there was a special visitor coming to Lisburn Council. And I says, if there's not a plus one on that, you're not going. So anyway, we were ushered into a room where we taught the whole protocol of what we were and were not supposed to do. But I have to be honest with you folks. When the Queen was brought over to me to be introduced, my mind went blank. I don't even remember if I curtseyed, and all protocol went out the window when she started having a conversation with me. And it was just one of the most memorable occasions for a young girl who had been an avid follower of the Queen for all of those years. So it was a very, very special memory. And I suppose that's what tonight was all about, just our own personal, special memories of such a good, godly, Christian lady. But just to finish off, as a family, we've been praying for our new king and the Queen Consort, and also for the Prince and Princess of Wales. We would ask for God's blessing on their reign with wisdom and health for the days ahead. Because there's a lot of responsibility now on that young family of the Prince and Princess of Wales. And we just pray that the Lord will bless them and keep them as a family unit and still have some kind of a family tying together, even as they try to continue to serve our country. And we just pray for the Lord's hand as well on our new king, and may God save our king. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tinsley and councillor Pope.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to offer my sincere condolences to King Charles III and the wider royal family at this deeply sad time. Many people in our borough will be feeling a profound sense of loss of the passing of the Queen, a constant throughout all of our lives. I pay tribute to her dedicated service over very many years and her valuable support and contribution to the Northern Irish peace process. For her willingness to reach out and to help heal old wounds here, for her faith and fortitude, yet ability to adapt through the changing generations. Finally, my thoughts are with King Charles III as he works through his own personal grief at the loss of his mother and taking on the huge responsibility ahead.
Thank you, councillor Pope. Members, there's no other lights on or hands up, so it's just, I would just like to thank you all for your attendance today. I will be writing to the royal family, to our new King Charles, to express our condolences on behalf of all the people of our borough, right across ABC Borough, and also to wish him well as King Charles III takes on, follows on his monarch's footsteps. It's been quoted already tonight, but I had just done two verses, and councillor Spears quoted one of them. We'd just like to quote them just as we finish our meeting tonight. And it is those verses from Second Timothy four, verse seven and eight. "I fought a good fight. I finished my course. I've kept the faith. Henceforth, there is set up for me a crown of righteousness, which the Lord, the righteous judge, shall give me that day, and not to me only, but unto all them, also that of his appearing." Members, today was a tough day for many, many people. We thank each one of you for your attendance earlier today at the proclamation here tonight, as we paid tribute. And I know some were very heartfelt, and we do thank each member for that. So we just, on that note, we will close our meeting, and I want to thank each one again for your attendance. Thank you.